Good evening. I'd like to call the Finance Committee meeting to order Wednesday, May 5, 2024. Jen, can you go up and call it all, please?
Sure. Counselor Ash.
President.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor DeBona.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Lee. Counselor Mitten. Chairman McCarthy.
President. Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forward to the stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin, let me read the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. So this evening, we have a few departments. We're starting off with the Assessors Department. So Mr. John Rowland, you are up, and congratulations and welcome.
Good evening. Before I begin, I'd like to take this moment to acknowledge former department head Colleen Healy, who recently stepped away from the city to focus on family and futures endeavors. Colleen served the city of Quincy for 10 years in the Assessors Department, eight as department head. Colleen was an extremely dedicated city employee who strove to bring innovation to this department and improve customer service for all. I would like to thank Colleen for all that she taught me and the example she set while working with her in this department. As the newly appointed department head, I will strive to emulate all that she brought to this department and the city of Quincy. I would also like to thank the staff of the Assessors Department for their hard work and dedication to serving the public this year. The Assessors Office is responsible for the valuation of over 27,000 parcels of real estate and personal property. The department is also responsible for administering over 74,000 bills for motor vehicle and boat exercise. In our department, we strive for accuracy as the only way to ensure that all constituents are taxed fairly and equitably. To best ensure this accuracy, our department is always exploring new ways to audit property data, whether it be through property inspections, sales listings, aerial imagery, and annual information requests for data. Each year, our department goes through a certification process with the Department of Revenue to make sure that the assessments are at full cash value in accordance with Mass General law. While the certification process is one of the most important aspects of our department, it is equally important that we are equipped to be able to defend our state-certified values in the abatement and appeals process. This budget presented tonight, which is evenly funded, ensures that our department will be equipped to defend our state-certified values and reduce the city's liability to abate assessed taxes. The Assessors Department is responsible for over 75% of the total revenue for the city. Along with valuation, the Assessors Department also oversees state property tax exemptions. There are a number of exemptions that qualified constituents can receive to reduce their tax bill. Administering these exemptions is one of the most rewarding aspects of this job. The state has exemption programs for seniors, legally blind property owners, widows, widowers, and minor children of the deceased parents, the spouses of police and firefighters killed in the line of duty, and disabled veterans and their spouses. Each year, our office mails out the exemption application forms to pass recipients. Starting this year, we will be rolling out the option for all applicants to submit their exemption application online. We have created enhancements to our website to provide e-forms for each exemption application, accompanied with downloadable and fillable PDF forms. All constituents can complete the application process from home or with the assistance from family members who may not be able to assist them in person. I thank you for this opportunity, and please, any questions?
Thanks, John. Start off with Counselor Harris.
Thank you. You know, it's precise what you said, and it's even. So I'm just gonna even fund it, so let's motion to approve.
So a motion by Counselor Harris to approve the Assessors budget. On the motion, anyone on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Those who say no, and the ayes have it. Thanks, John.
All right. Thank you very much.
Paintless.
Yep.
Chief, you're up. Good evening.
Hopefully mine's as easy.
Motion by Counselor Harris to approve the police budget. On the motion, Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, good to see you in here tonight.
Absolutely.
As you look at your particular budget, patrolmen and patrol officers/workforce, how do you think you're doing, you know, number-wise? Are you where you need to be? Do you need more? Is there areas in the overtime? Just want to see where you're at.
Yeah, we are down right now, Counselor, and this budget, this proposed budget, I should say, will bring us up fully staffed.
Okay, so it'll put you right where you need to be.
Correct, yes.
And how many officers do you have right now?
There'd be 180 patrol officers. Currently, we're at 174. We were hoping to have hired earlier, but we've had issues getting the officers that we've identified into police academies. But we're very fortunate that we were able to secure spots in a June academy. So we have seven officers getting sworn in on June 3 to start a June 10. I believe it's a June 10, a June 11 academy, so that'll bring us up to a full complement.
Great. I always ask the chief, over the years I've been here, how are we doing on the opioid epidemic? How are we doing with the Narcan? And do you think it's above, about the same, or what do you think we're at?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, Counselor. It's a problem nationwide, and we're not immune to it here in Quincy. As you know, we were the first department under Chief Keenan to equip all of our offices with nasal Narcan to reverse the effects. In 2023, unfortunately, we had 192 overdoses in the city of Quincy, with first responding Quincy police officers reversing 74 of those. Unfortunately, 70 of them were fatal. Just since January 1 of this year, we've had 70 overdoses. Responding officers were able to reverse 26 of them, but 10 of them did prove fatal. So we've seen an explosion nationwide with these pill press operations, where fentanyl is a lot cheaper than heroin. There's no growing season for fentanyl. It's synthetic. So what we're seeing is these manufacturers are taking fentanyl, binding it with binding agents, and they have these pill presses that will actually produce what appears to be a pharmaceutical-grade Percocet, or what they're taking is methamphetamine using a binding agent and basically stamping Adderall pills that, to the untrained eye, you wouldn't know the difference. But six or seven out of 10 nationwide, according to the DEA and what we're finding here in Quincy, are that six to seven out of 10 illegal pills seized are fake and contain oftentimes lethal doses of fentanyl. So what we've done, we recognize that we're not going to arrest our way out of it. We're doing our best to make the city of Quincy a hostile environment for people to come in and sell this poison. Our drug unit is incredibly active. They're out there in 2023. They made 157 arrests, executed 24 search warrants, recovered 16 illegal firearms, 16 stolen vehicles, and seized over $600,000 in ill-gotten proceeds from drugs and other crimes. So we also, again, like I said, we're not going to arrest our way out of it. We have partnered with the DEA and Quincy Public Schools. In this past year, we put every high school student in Quincy, both Quincy and North Quincy High, through the DEA's One Pill Can Kill campaign to alert them of the dangers of fentanyl and what they might think is, you know, an Adderall pill or a Percocet, that they don't realize that it didn't come from a pharmacy. It came from someone's basement, and just the first time they tried, it could kill them. In addition, we have what used to be our community policing unit is now our community services unit. It's just sort of rebranded and expanded, and we have two full-time mental health clinicians that they do follow-ups when people do overdose. They go out there, they partner with, we partner with Manette Health, and we do follow-ups with people and try and steer them towards recovery when we can. So those are some of the things that we're doing and will continue to do.
Chief, just want to say thank you for everything you do, all your police officers, your entire department. We're looking forward to the construction in the October 2025 of the new building. It's coming up every day pretty well. So just want to say thank you for everything you guys, all of you, do throughout the city of Quincy for us and our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Chair recognizes Counselor Mitten and then Counselor Ash.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to say congratulations to you, Chief, and the officers that received commendations for Law Day. It's great work, great stories, and job well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's start off by just talking about a meeting we had last week. We talked about some issues that were relative to Ward 5, but also to the city. And one of the issues we talked about was the Walston Beach Quincy Shore Drive with the drinking, excessive noises from parties, motorcycles, speeding. Can you just give me an update or give us an update as to the progress?
Yeah. After, as you know, the Quincy Shore Drive and particularly the beach falls under state police jurisdiction. And I know that in the past, there were some issues with us doing any enforcement action down there. After our meeting, I met with the major for the area, explained to him the issues we were having, and they're having some manpower issues as well. They're spread pretty thin, whether it's, you know, Riviera Beach and then the beaches in South Boston. So their manpower was a little light, and they welcomed the opportunity to work with us. So I had our union, the Patrolman Union President reached out to SPAM to make sure that there wouldn't be any union issues with us down there. So we're going to be partnering together. Actually, you'll see our Quincy Police Officers out there this weekend, helping patrol Quincy Shore Drive with the state police. So the state police have a, it's called a CAT team, Community Action Team, and we're going to be working with them to better patrol the beach and make it a safe place for residents to recreate.
Excellent. Another topic that we talked about, which is citywide, is evictions of troubled houses, whether it be a gun-involved incident, drugs, or just a neighborhood nuisance. Any action on that?
Yeah, so I spoke with Detective Sergeant Erin King, who used to be an ADA in Quincy District Court. So she's very familiar with the court process and the judges up there. And she's been tasked with taking that over. So when we do have a property that comes to our attention, either through patrol officers or the community services unit or the drug unit, then she's going to work with the court to get those people evicted and the problem tenants out.
That's great. That sends a message. The word gets out that Quincy's not fooling around with the quantity of calls or the bad quality of the calls, that we're going to move on these people and get rid of them.
Right.
You briefly mentioned the two social workers that work for you.
Yep.
When I was working with the department, I worked with one of them. At that time, there was only one. Did a great job. He really would sit down with the people, and then he would follow up on it. Any plans in the future of hiring more?
Yeah, so we do have a second one, Samantha Curly, that just started. She's been working great. Tim O'Brien is the first counselor that you referred to. He's been working days in community services unit. Samantha Curly just started, so she's sort of training with Tim now. But to get to your point, the work that they were doing, I asked Lieutenant Joelensky, who runs the unit, to kind of give me some stats. And just last year, not only with the Narcan follow-ups, but with the mental health follow-ups, they responded to 682 calls, either for somebody in mental health crisis, and they sort of steer them in the right direction and get them the help that they need, that we can sort of intervene before this crisis behavior escalates to criminal behavior. So that program's been very successful, and like I said, 682 last year. Now with a second clinician, I only expect that number to rise where we have more help on the evening shift.
Excellent. And lastly, I got an email today regarding your ride-along program with the Citizens Police Academy.
Yep.
And they were raving about it. Can you just talk about some of the other programs that you offer the city residents?
Sure, yeah. Happy to. The ride-along program, I'm not sure if we did bring back the Citizen Police Academy. They're actually graduating tomorrow. They started in March. So we've had that program. It's been pretty successful. I believe we have 12 residents currently in that, and we're already anticipating doing another one. But we also started with the high school students' ride-alongs too. So I'm not sure if it was the high school or the Citizen Police Academy where they're doing the ride-alongs. But we have started with the high school kids who have an interest in law enforcement. We've been taking them out. I believe we've had 15 students so far participate in that. But we have a number of other programs. We have our self-defense program, one of them involving a pepper spray class that they're actually going to be teaching tomorrow night. And we hope to do that every month or so. There's 33 residents signed up for the class tomorrow night. We also do the Cops in the Pox, which I know you were involved in for years. Sergeant Pat Fady has sort of taken that over. And we do that July 1 to Labor Day, Monday through Friday, 5 to 9, where at the Marshall School Basketball Courts. We're at Welcome Young. We're at Robert Street. Robert Street's, it's pretty much our biggest one. There's, on average, 50 to 75 kids there. So we have 25 officers that participate in that. They go, they play basketball, they hang out with the kids. It's very informal with the rec leaders and things like that. At the end of the year, Napolise helps us out, and we do a nice pizza party for them all. And that's been a pretty successful program. We also have, obviously, our Dare Camp, which they've been doing for decades, and that's very popular. That fills up really fast. We have a two-week program in the summer. There's 120 fifth graders, and then we use 24. We hire 24 high school counselors, take the kids around Canterbury Lake Park and Old Lindy's, Georges Island, things like that, for two weeks. Ryan Donley, one of our community services officers, started a youth academy at Quincy High School. It's a one-week police, sort of a mini police academy. It gives them exposure to some of the things in law enforcement. We had 40 kids participate in that last year, and that was very successful. We'll be doing that one again. Our marine unit, we offer three boating classes, boating safety classes a year. There's about 60 people in each one, so we put about 180 residents through that every year. And that's great, obviously, with the number of yacht clubs and active marinas we have, to have that many people get some experience in safe boating. And then I'd say probably one of our most successful is our car seat program, the Child Passenger Safety Program, where we have offices, we have nine officers that take this two-week class, and they become certified technicians putting in car seats. Last year, we had 423 installed last year, and we distributed 50 free car seats to people in need. So we partnered with WIC Social Hospital and some private companies, Walmart and recently Bye Bye Baby, to provide this service free of charge to people. So that's been very popular. We get a lot of nice comments and notes on that. So.
Thank you, Chief. That makes the department really shine. It's good work. Thank you.
Some great people. They're very dedicated and can't take credit for their work. They really like doing it, and we get a lot of positive buy-in from the community as well. So.
Thank you.
Counselor Ash.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Chief. Thank you for the many run-ins and interactions over the last four months. A couple of things that we won't, you know, discuss on the public forum, but then also even the patrol, whatever I have somebody say, hey, I haven't had a patrol car come down my street in a while. And I know most recently, I get excited when I leave the house and I see QPD outside of 1,000 Southern Artery telling people to slow down. So that's appreciated. Just a quick question with respect to some of the, there's three overtime line items.
Sure.
Could you maybe enlighten us or the public on what constitutes overtime, or if that's going up? You know, the question, I'm sure, and not to overcomplicate things, but the question could be, you know, fully staffed, but the overtime's going up. I'm sure that's more details, maybe more construction. If you could maybe speak to that, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So the details with road construction is a completely separate item. That's not a budgeted item. Those are paid for by the individual contractors. We contracted with this company Extra Duty now that manages the details for us. So those offices are paid directly from, whether it's a utility or a contractor or something like that. In terms of the overtime, it's just one of those necessities in public safety. You know, even though we're fully staffed, there's need-to-haves and there's nice-to-haves. You know, offices take vacations, and when we have minimum staffing levels and there's not enough offices working that shift, we do hire to fill those. So those are really a need-to-have. And then the nice-to-haves are things that, you know, we monitor these lines on a weekly basis to see where we are relative to, you know, the point in the year that we should be at or what we should and shouldn't have spent. And when we have, you know, some extra money, we will put out extra patrols in certain areas, like, you know, say, we're going to be working on Quincy Shore Drive and the beach. A lot of those offices will be on overtime or comp time or something like that. And then there's obviously the things that come up that are sort of predictably unpredictable, you know, whether it's a severe weather event and you have to call in more resources, or, you know, we've since 2020 have dealt with a number of protests and things like that, or overtime to staff the many events that happen in the city, you know, whether it's a parade or any of the special events that we have. And there are a great number of them. So those are all staffed with extra offices on overtime.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devine.
Chief Kennedy, thank you very much. You've been doing a great job since I've seen you. I think we're both getting our training wheels off at the same time. I wanted to say thank you very much for the, you've been doing a little bit more with the traffic enforcement. I know that some of my constituent neighbors on Dayton Street, it's a one-way during certain hours, and you guys have been active there and some other streets like that. It's going a long way. People are noticing it, so I appreciate that. And we had a conversation that we're probably going to have a few other hotspots, and I remember you talking about that last year too, so I'm going to try and utilize that with you. But I wanted to say thank you for that. And I forget the other thing I was going to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that. And if we can keep that up, it's working.
Yeah, one of the things that we did was sort of reinvigorate our traffic unit. We have a captain in there full-time and a full-time sergeant. We added two more officers to it, one on days and one on nights, that are basically just specifically going out to problem areas. And, you know, we're just trying to slow things down as much as we can. Unfortunately, we've had some pretty bad accidents involving pedestrians and bicyclists. And, you know, we launched our education campaign to try and let people know that we're out there and we're more visible. But yeah, anything we can do. And if anyone has, you know, problem areas, the traffic captain, Ralph Willet, has been identifying areas where we have had significant injuries or significant accidents, and we're really just sort of targeting those areas and hitting them a lot harder. And again, not trying to hit people in the wallet. It's more of an education campaign. If they get stopped, the vast majority of, you know, of things are, like I said, more educational and not, you know, out there trying to raise money or anything like that. So.
Right. I remembered what I was going to say. With your traffic enforcement, that really helps T-PAL. T-PAL, I've been in their office almost daily since I started. They probably look for me every day and hide, turn the lights off or something. But their signs are useless without police intervention. And so when you guys are out there enforcing them, it really helps. So I appreciate that too, because many people are speeding down along Ward 4 because they use it as side streets to run up and down the highway. And a lot of them are not Quincy residents, and they're, you know, they're not following the signs. So the more we can deal with enforcing those, like you said, you're working on it, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, it's a joint effort with T-PAL and our partners in the community. So.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have a motion by Counselor Harris. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Motion by Counselor DeBona. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Say no, and the ayes have it. Thanks, Chief. Sarah, you're up next for the library. Good evening.
Thanks, everyone, for having me tonight. I know you have a packed agenda, so I'll endeavor to be brief. We've had a busy year at the library for fiscal '24. Since fiscal '23, we've doubled our daily attendance, quadrupled our adult programming offerings, doubled our museum pass usage, and increased children and teen programming by 25%. We've enjoyed enormous improvements to our facilities, including a recently relocated bookstore, the first-ever dedicated teen room at the main library, upgrades to the children's room, the opening of a new large-capacity community space at the North Quincy branch. Later this month, we'll be opening our Maker Space, so watch for an invitation to that ribbon cutting at the main library, where the community can learn to 3D print, sew, use design software, a laser cutter, many other skills. And special thanks to Counselor McCarthy and Paul Hines for their help to do a complete exterior refresh and repaint of the Adam Shore branch. If you haven't been by, it looks beautiful. The library turned outwards towards our community this year to build coalitions and gather information on how best we can serve the citizens of Quincy. Consequently, after eight public meetings and eight focus groups and a citywide survey released in six languages, we'll be rolling out our new five-year strategic plan on June 30. We continue to build our community services coalition, which now includes Father Bill's, Main Spring, Manette Community Centers, Bay Cove, and the Quincy Police Department. Library collections now include our wildly successful Library of Things, a new video game collection, a vinyl record collection, all launched this year. And we didn't just add new things. We evaluated the things we already have with the library's first comprehensive art and artifact appraisal in the library's history. Internally, we've restructured our organization chart, offering more dedicated support to the branches, and reviewed and updated many of our policies and procedures, including the build-out and a complete set of policies for the newly-formed Archives and Special Collections Department. We continue our robust investment in continuing education and professional development for staff so we can best serve the community, including regular trainings on safety and security for staff and patrons, harm reduction, and health and wellness. In the pipeline for next year, we have big plans to help celebrate the Quincy 400. We're going to roll out a complete library rebrand, new offices for branch leadership, the IT department and our reference staff, and upgrading our Archives and Special Collections climate-controlled storage so we can best preserve the important historical artifacts that belong to the people of Quincy, and a complete new network infrastructure. I'm sure you saw in the budget proposal, there are modest increases reflected in our budget, primarily to meet the requirements of the CBA, but also to meet the materials expenditures required by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners in order to stay certified and a member in good standing of the Old Colony Library Network. A word about the staff at the Crane before I leave you. I'm honored to work alongside this group of innovative, empathetic, and enthusiastic professionals who show up and give their prodigious talents even under extremely trying circumstances. And of course, I'd like to thank the mayor and his staff for all the generous support of the library, and my fellow department heads. And any questions?
Thank you. Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sarah, we frequent the library quite a bit. My middle boy, he just loves to go to the children's section and get a book. He likes the, you sell used books as well, and he loves that little store. So we go in and we get him there. Very affordable. He enjoys it, especially during the wintertime when there's almost nothing you can really do throughout the winter. And myself, you know, the hardbacks now, you know, you're looking at $35, $40 for a hardcover. And you're great, because if you don't have it at your library, at Thomas Crane, or in the network, you can go outside, and you'll email me to let me know when it's in, and I'll come in and grab it. So it's been a huge plus. And I hope that the viewers and the constituents out there, the citizens of Quincy, really use that Thomas Crane library. We have a lot of branches throughout the city, North Quincy, Walston, and Adam Shore. Real quick on the Walston location. How are we doing with that particular location? Are we renovating that? Are we?
We, I'm hoping... We, I'm hoping to put that in the first year's action plan for this fiscal year to start examining what is going to look, what that's going to look like. So for anyone who hasn't been in recently, it's our oldest facility besides Richardson. It is a little rundown. It's just old, and it's hard to build out. It doesn't really meet the needs of a modern library. It has our lowest circulation despite the excellent Herculean efforts of the branch librarian, Amanda Pegwheat. We either need to build a new one, we need to renovate and expand that one, or perhaps examine the possibility of serving a part of the city that isn't currently experiencing the level of service. We are a little heavy on how many libraries are sort of clustered on this end of town and maybe not so much library service over that way. There is a movement in public libraries right now back towards, believe it or not, bookmobiles, which is actually a very cost-effective way to serve your whole community. Last spring, I talked to Commissioner Murphy a little bit about doing, like, mobile service at the beaches in partnership with parks and recreation. So that's something that he and I have discussed, and I'd love to see in the future. It's kind of take an ice cream truck model to the beach, but instead of ice cream books. So Walston's something, we're going to start doing studies and meeting with the community and see what people think.
I know we made the upgrades with Commissioner Hines with the North Quincy location. And we've done additions to the Adam Shore one with Counselor McCarthy. I know that we had air conditioning problems in there at one point, and it's really mitigated it and done a really good job. So we don't want to leave out Walston as the other branch. So thank you for everything you do. It's a very important aspect of any municipality. So kudos to you and your staff and continued success. Thank you. And motion to approve.
On the motion. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Have a good night.
All right, Mr. Sleeman, Emergency Management, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, Ali Sleeman, Emergency Management Director. Just a minute to talk about our department. This last fiscal year, we updated all our plans to include the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan for the city, the hazardous material emergency response plan, city evacuation plan, the city continuity operations plan, and the city mass sheltering plan. All these plans are reviewed and updated annually, and tabletop exercises are conducted to test the plans with relevant stakeholders. Be happy to take any questions.
Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sleeman, thank you for everything you've done over there. I know a few years ago, after the storm of 2018 and the flooding that we had throughout the city, I know we were without an emergency management department. With your incoming asset as the new department had come in, establishing and reestablishing the CERT program, which I put a recommendation and a resolution forward, and the Community Emergency Response Team, you've done a fantastic job with that. I think the last time, you got over 20 citizens to assist in the disaster response system. I know personally, you've done a very good job with getting certified as a certified emergency manager, which is a very difficult task to do. And I know that you do a very good job with any fires that we have displacement throughout the city of Quincy. If folks don't have a place to stay or sleep, you do a really good job with the aftermath of all that. So I just want to say kudos to you and your department. You know, you're proactive with what you need to do out there to be ready. But then you have to be reactive when the fires and the flooding and all these other emergency procedures are out there in the city. But I think your department is well-needed, and you've done a great job in your role. So just thank you. And motion to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor DeBona. On the motion, Counselor Campbell, then Counselor Devine.
Thank you, Sleeman, for being here tonight. I just, a quick question on the notification for throughout the city, the mechanism we have in place. Do you have any idea what the amount of participants there are now? And are we doing anything to spread the word to get people to join in?
So right now, we have about 30,000 people that are enrolled. We advertise it as much as we can. We advertise on social media and print media. And it is enrollment-based. So we do have, we have iPOS, we have the integrated, we have the FEMA Alert System, which would be a catastrophic emergency, which will hit everybody's phones, I'm sure. Maybe we've got some of those Amber Alerts. So the opt-in is, it's more of a community notification system. So the more people we have that opt-in, the more people get the alerts. So when we subscribe through the vendor, they give us a drop-in every year. So they update that. But still, it's on people in the community to get out there and to enroll. So, and we try our best to get people to enroll.
That's great. Is there a threshold that needs to reach that?
It's unlimited. So we can continue, as many people, you know, can continue to enroll until, you know, it's unlimited. So, but yeah, it is important that people enroll in that, particularly for snow emergencies.
Yeah, no, that's great. And I get the alerts now. It'll help with AR at certain times. So I just wanted to see if there's any effort towards making that more available and notifying people that there is that opportunity out there to spread the word. So, good stuff. Thank you.
I was just going to mention the same thing that Counselor DeBona said. One of our friends did the program for citizens certification. They liked it a lot. They had a lot of fun doing it. And so I think it's great. And it informs people on what you're actually doing. But Noel said something about a certificate of emergency. What is that?
I got my license as a certified emergency manager last year. So.
Congratulations. Was that difficult to get, or was?
Pretty hard to get, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have you.
Thanks.
Any other counsels? We're good. Motion made by Counselor DeBona. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Ali.
Thanks.
Brian, IT. Good evening.
Good evening, counsels. As you can see, the IT budget is level-funded within contractual and current expenses. Personal services did increase. It looks like there's one new position, but that's actually an existing employee that his responsibilities and duties changed. So we changed the job description and job title for that and added it to a different line and took it from the other line. Any questions on the budget itself?
Counselor Harris?
Brian, thank you. Your department is actually the hot beat of the city.
Thank you, Counselor.
When you think about it. So, level-funded, I'm just going to simply be really quick in motion to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Harris. On the motion, just a question from the chair on that position, Brian, that the MUNIS support, is that what that is?
Yeah, it's ERP manager.
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand. Yep. Thank you. So a motion by Counselor Harris. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Brian. All right, next up, Veteran Services. Christine, good evening.
Good evening, counsels, and thank you for having me tonight. I'm the Director of Veteran Services. And I'm here to just explain to you a little bit about what our office does. And also, thank you for the support for our veterans each and every day that you give us. So in the city of Quincy, we have close to 3,000 veterans that live here. And those are just the self-identified ones. Those are not counting the veterans that come in and maybe aren't registered here in the city, but they do live here. Right now, we have 135 veterans on a benefit called Chapter 115. That's a financial assistance benefit that veterans are eligible for. With the Chapter 115 comes a financial help for each veteran that is calculated through the state. And the state is then gives the money, and the city gives the money, and then the state reimburses the city at 75 cents to the dollar. We're also doing VA claims that have skyrocketed in the amount of veterans walking in just to file their claims. These are veterans coming newly out of the service, as well as veterans that have not filed a claim in 30 years. Each claim that we file is income to these veterans if approved through the VA, and then ultimately benefits the city. We're seeing that the benefit, the VA claims are turning around a lot faster. But again, these are veterans that are coming in, whether, you know, just out of the service or have been out for 30 years. Just to let you know, what we're doing now is a huge outreach so that all of our veterans in the city know about the benefits that are eligible to them, where our office is, what we're there to help them with. You would be surprised with the number that still come into the office for the first time and say, I didn't know you were here, and I didn't know what I was eligible for. So thank you. It is a surprise, but not really. It took me 30 years to know that there was a VSO office in each and every city. So thank you so much for allowing me to work with our veterans and the great staff that I have in the office. And I'm here to take any questions at all.
Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Thank you. Christine, I've had the pleasure of being, you know, the chairman of the, from the city council on the veterans.
Yes, sir.
And I've had many enjoyable nights hearing all that you do. You're doing an incredible job. I can't say much more than that. I know that when I referred to your office, old family that's still, some of them are still in Squanum, that somebody wasn't living in Squanum, a veteran that passed away, and folks didn't know where to go and who to talk to, and they reached out, and your office was absolutely fantastic. So I can't thank you enough, you know. As a son of the American Legion, my dad, I can't thank you enough. And that's so important to the folks that are behind, behind the folks when they're gone and taking care of business. So.
Yes, it truly is. It's an office, and it's called the Veterans Office, but it certainly, that's not all we serve. We serve the families. We serve the friends who are, you know, maybe just trying to bury their friend, and they don't know where to go. So ultimately, you know, we're serving everyone we can, and that's what we're there for.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you. And thank you, your folks. Motion to approve, please.
Motion made by Counselor Harris. On the motion, Councilman.
Can you just talk a little bit about this house-to-house program?
Absolutely. I'm very excited about it.
I signed up. I don't know much about it.
I know you did. Thank you. So on this Saturday, we pulled the list through the city on the veterans that live here in the city. I've, we're working with the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office, and together we compiled information, resources, benefits, a packet just filled with information. Now, some of this information, they may already know, but they, I'm sure that there's new information in these packets that's important for them to see, to have, and to just know that the office is there for them. And what we're doing is bringing people, volunteers, in to go to the houses, one, to hand them the packet full of information, but to thank these veterans for their service, because that's important to our veterans.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Ash?
Good evening, Christine. How are you?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for your service and being the liaison between one of the most important populations in the city and us. We appreciate it. I just had a quick question on the budget. Is, it seems like the administrative secretary number doubled. Is that because?
So we had to add a new admin person. What we're seeing now is Father Bill's and obviously the crisis for homes. We have a lot of homeless veterans. They're not our Quincy residents, but there are residents when they're here at Father Bill's. So the turnover when they're there is quite fast. But they're here for a good, maybe three to five months, and those veterans still are eligible for benefits. So what we're seeing is they're getting into our system, getting enrolled in the Chapter 115 benefit, and then ultimately getting housing and then moving outside of Quincy. So with the homeless issue, we're seeing more veterans out of the Father Bill's. So with a total of 130, 135, the Chapter 115 benefit really takes a lot of time. And requesting those benefits through the state just requires us to have an additional person. It's too much for the one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, is that counsel?
Yes.
Counselor Devine?
You're very well-liked, Director Cugini. You do an excellent job. The city's very lucky to have you also. And we'll see you on Saturday. And I believe, did you bring, you brought Rees Across America to Quincy also, did you?
I did, yes.
Yeah, that's another great thing that you do. And I participated, and it makes me feel special. Some of these headstones are, there's no families for them anymore. They're very old. And we're putting Rees on it. And so thank you for all those things you do.
Absolutely. And just for Rees Across America piece, Quincy has been number one the last three years in our, on the East Coast.
Oh, wow.
And that is because of the city and the residents and our community. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Counselor Harris for approval. No other comments. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Next up, Department of Grant Management. I'm going to call it Mr. Scribby, but before Mr. Scribby, no, come on up, Jim. I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Walker, who wants to make Mr. Scribby sound really good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the body. Before Mr. Scribby answers any questions you may have about some of the specifics within this department, I just wanted to give the body a brief overview from a policy perspective on what the mayor was thinking and what we hope to accomplish with this new department. First, I want to be clear that these are not new positions. Each of the jobs, positions listed in this department are currently part of the city. They exist and are funded through various grant sources. Two of them are funded through ARPA, and one was funded through another grant source. We are simply moving these positions, which have proven incredibly valuable, to one centralized location and under the umbrella of the city's operating budget. This new department will create a centralized clearinghouse for all federal, state, and private grant solicitation, grant writing, and grant management. As I noted, these job duties have been ongoing for some time. As this body well knows, the city's been quite successful over the years in obtaining federal and state grant monies on a wide range of projects and initiatives. And this is only going to help us continue to make that kind of progress. Again, two of these positions, the Director of Grant Management and the Grant Funds Manager, were both funded through ARPA for the last several years, and they were absolutely invaluable. When it came to ARPA, particularly for the reporting and the bookkeeping on the Funds Manager side of it, and as the other eligible programs became available from the federal government during that time period, it became very clear we needed someone to run herd on filing applications, working with the congressman's office, working with our senator's offices, making sure we were tapping every possible resource that we could for these available federal and to some degree, state funding as well. The grant writer position has existed for a number of years. It has been very valuable to the city, a great to the city, a great resource for almost every department in the city to call when there are these, you know, these meaty state and federal grant packages. It's been a great resource for us to have someone on staff that can take the time and really put together impressive packages that, over the course of the last several years, have won us, you know, a number of major grant awards that, within the departments themselves, there really aren't necessarily the resources to put the kind of time and effort into that kind of grant running. So, that's the baseline of where we are, and I know there's some specific things in the budget, and Mr. Scribby's prepared to answer any questions about those.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And just a quick comment, and just to follow up on with Mr. Walker. I think it's a great move to have that Grant Management Department because I know a lot of us will, you know, there's always that, we get a grant writer, we'll get the grant writer, we got to see the grant writer, and it's hard to pinpoint it. Now, you know, we have a point of contact, Jim, and yourself in the department, to work things so that a lot of this stuff is not left on the table, which I hear sometimes because you really don't know what's out there, you don't know what to ask for. So, with that, Jim, I'll turn it over to you, and greetings and congratulations.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, counselors. And I'd like to give a shout out to our Grants Manager, A.J. Cabillion. We work as a great team, and of course, we are a liaison between all the different cities and departments. We work hand-in-hand. Ultimately, these projects will become departments' projects, but we make them aware and we help apply for such projects. So, I'm happy to help, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Director Scribby, thank you very much. There's a lot of towns and cities that don't get access to a lot of these things that we're able to get, so this department's going to be, the return that we get for the city is unbelievable. I don't think people understand how valuable it is, but I wanted to say thank you to you and Mr. Cabillion.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Jim. Congratulations. And I don't think that it's, we'll really see the impact of this. I'm sure we're already seeing it, but going forward, I imagine if you're focusing on this directly, I can't imagine the impact it's going to have and loosen up other places within the city. Is there a full process involved, so from each department? Is there something set up right now where they can submit to you, and then, how does that work?
Yeah, we're looking to roll something out. There's a few programs that we're looking to implement, something called Monday.com as a task management software, where a lot of these projects are, they're all at different phases. Some are not ready to be implemented as grant projects, where they still need engineering plans maybe involved or community outreach component involved. So, I think using a software like that, not only will keep things on page, us on task, however, it keeps us all on the same page. Right now, it's more of a word-of-mouth. If something, if we're expecting something, we'll shoot an email or a phone call. We all work very well together here, so it's not that difficult. But I do think some sort of centralized software could keep us more, get in pings of, hey, this program's coming out within a month, let's get our ducks in a row, because the turnaround for some of these applications are quick sometimes.
Yeah, sure. That's great. That's great. I'd actually make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Campbell. On the motion, Counselor Ash?
Just real quick, Mr. Scribby, congratulations, and to Mr. Cabillion. It's nice to see the department formally being created, I guess, if you will. I think it speaks to, in a lot of ways, the trajectory of the city, and I'm sure if we could think of many cities and towns that don't have this department and could very well be missing out on, you know, grant writing and management as an art in of itself, so I hear, I wouldn't know the first thing to do with it, but now I know who to call, I guess. That being said, just congratulations and look forward to asking you about the ROI next year.
Okay. Just to give you, just a shout out to Ward 2. Just a few hours ago, we submitted an application for just a pedestrian safety grant right around 1,000 Southern Artery and a few of our senior housing buildings, and not to stale T-PAL's thunder, because again, this is a team effort, but that's something that was submitted earlier today.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor DeBana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you just said, congratulations, I'm looking forward to this whole department. As you were just saying, for the T-PAL, are you, you know, collaboratively working with other departments to help them get funding together? And what departments do you think you are going to be working with the most that has it?
Absolutely one of them. Public Buildings is another. There's a lot of programs, competitive funds, but also funding that is through formula-based. However, there's still an application process. We've had some success through Public Buildings and HVAC projects, but you have to show that your district is, the community that you're, is, this school, there's been a few programs that are about schools, and they have to check certain boxes of what the program's looking for. So, there's a lot of helping departments through that process.
This is a very important department because, you know, municipalities could be losing out on funding that they would be getting out there as long as they just applied for them.
Absolutely.
So, this is, I'm looking forward to this and talking a little bit more over the course of the year, so looking forward to you guys doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselors. So, we have a motion approved by Counselor Campbell for Department of Grant Management. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Scribby. Good evening, Mr. Grenon.
Good evening. How are we doing?
We're doing good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Finance Committee. Just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to present the T-PAL fiscal 2025 budget here for you tonight. I want to highlight the changes you'll see in our budget. In the Personnel Services line, section of lines, you'll see several changes. Many of these are increases due to collective bargaining with the Quincy Public Safety Association, which is our outdoor electrician group. That's the group that handles maintenance of the streetlights, the traffic signals, and the fire alarm in our buildings and overhead on the street light bulbs. The reason you're seeing a lot of these changes this fiscal year rather than last fiscal year is because they settled a little bit later. It's a smaller group. It was one of the last ones that we saddled with. So, specifically, you'll see some changes to hazardous duty pay, education pay line items. If you have any specific questions on those, I'm happy to answer that. Part of the negotiations with that group was the relocation of Superintendent of Fire Alarm Brent Campbell back to the Fire Department. The thinking behind that is that Brent has become a pretty integral piece of the administration of the Fire Department and is the point of contact jurisdictionally for Chief Jackson for a number of items, fire alarm inspection, public safety communication, the radio towers, the radios. So, it made sense for him, where he was less involved with the hands-on infrastructure work, to move back to Fire. To fill in some of the managerial duties that Brent brought forth in our department, you'll see the addition of an electric foreman. That will be a union position within that Public Safety Association. That person will do all the duties of a regular T-PAL electrician, but the additional responsibilities of payroll, scheduling, discipline, that sort of thing. You also see the addition of an Assistant Traffic Engineer, which was highlighted in the mayor's presentation earlier in this cycle. With the growth of the city and the department, you know, so have the responsibilities and the expectations of us to do deep plan review for planning and zoning. There's a lot of construction on the road, as you all know. This person will specifically work hand-in-hand with the DPW and other departments to help manage the coordination of all those traffic projects going on to make sure there is least impactful to day-to-day traffic as possible. And then, they'll also be a key contributor to city-led engineering studies, especially the board councils. You know, every time there's a stop sign request, every time somebody reports that they're speeding on the street, we collect data, we try to do a write-up with some recommendations. Ally Rule, our current traffic engineer, I've said it before, I'll say it 100 times, she's wonderful, she is the best traffic engineer in the state. We're lucky to have her. We are definitely overtaxing her, so we're looking to get her some support to help, you know, turn around these engineering studies a little bit quicker. And then additionally, in contractual, you'll see increases to park lighting and street lighting. That's to handle progressive rate increases over the last three years from National Grid. Rates are up approximately 40% for that sort of lighting tariff over the last three years, so that is what the change is for there. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Chair recognizes Counselor DeBana, then Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Grenon, you guys doing a great job. It's come a long way since the inception of forming this department, the traffic, parking, alarm, and lighting, and you guys are doing a great job. Just some of the questions I have, and I always go back to, is the crosswalks. The painting of the crosswalks, do you use any fluorescent coloring, especially around the schools?
Yes.
Have you used it? Will you use it? Are you using it?
Yep, we do. Part of the spec for the material on that is, it's reflective bead. It's essentially sand, just glass bead that they grind up. It gets, once they paint the crosswalks, they throw the bead on top of it. That's what prevents, that's what gives the reflectivity when the lights hit it. That does fade over time, which is when you see us, we have a three-year cycle on crosswalks. We try to hit in epoxy every year. We do hit the ones around the schools every one to two years to make sure that the reflectivity stays high. So, that is certainly part of what we're doing.
I know over the last course of the year, I've been on the phone with you a few times and emails and stuff about other constituents with the flashing crosswalks.
Yep.
How many do we have across the city? I think you had mentioned they were grant-funded in that other department. How many do we have, and can we get any more of them?
Yeah, we have 36 that are installed, which is wonderful. We've been able to do that through a number of different grants from city funding. So, you know, we like thank this body for your support on that. There's six more that are going up this construction season, so we'll be up to 42 by the end of this construction season. We do purchase a number of them as part of our yearly buy for supplies, and then we are always on the hunt for ways to, either through development mitigation or through grants to identify locations that we can, we can add more of them, because they are a great help, and they're very popular with the residents.
It's been huge, and, you know, there's been some fatalities over the year. My beloved friend, Donnie Bowes, had passed away. He got hit by a vehicle, and I miss him every day. Went to the Red Sox game last night.
Yeah.
And he's got a gait that's, you know, we took a little photo, and I was thinking about him, and I ask Red Sox employees all the time about him.
Yeah.
They're like, oh, we really miss him, so I'll keep on fighting for more crosswalks. I'll keep on calling you for them. And, you know, where we can put them throughout the city of Quincy. And on that note, you know, fatalities slash people getting hit by vehicles, and I saw a nice QA TV, one with Counselor Mitten and Irene Lutz about the bicycling as well. I think if collaboratively we work together to get them in the right areas, it was very, very useful. I watched it the other night, and I was like, wow, this is really, really good, this information. Counselor Mitten knows a lot about that, so.
Yeah, that's great.
I just think if we work as a team, we work as the council, we work with the departments, you, and we get out there and we say, how can we make Quincy better? Because it's been tough. We have a lot of construction going on, we have a lot of roads that are being done up, and we're being rerouted with detours. We talked a little bit about state, state roads. I know they've been, they've been out there on Furnace Brook Parkway almost every day, and it's like, they're rerouting everybody throughout the city, and it's like, it's been tough.
Yep.
And we're trying to get it, but you know, as we get into these tougher months, you know, the kids are still at school, the buses are still out there, and we're trying to do the best job. In your department, do you look like you're funded where you need to be? Workforce, supplies, you know, are you there where you need to be?
Yeah, you know, I think that's, I thank you for that question. I do think that we are in a good place. You know, we started in 2016, and we've come back every year with modest asks, growth when we can handle it. You know, we've had the benefit of it being new, being able to identify, you know, from the ground up, like how to build the department, and I think we're at a good place, and I certainly, you know, if I thought that we needed more, I would ask for it because the mayor and this body have been very generous and supportive, so I do appreciate that.
Personally, I just want to thank you for getting back to me on almost, on everything.
Yeah.
And then, and you telling me, listen, we haven't got the funding for that, but we're going to get it, and when we get it, we're going to be installing it. It's been a couple of crosswalks around the city that I've asked you for, and you eventually got them when you had them.
Yep.
So, I'm looking forward to the next six and where they're at.
Yeah.
And I think a huge one was out in front of Veterans Memorial Stadium, especially, you know, there's a couple, one at Adams Field and one further down where the park is there for the softball field and the little kids' field.
It's a well-used.
Playground. It's been huge, so. And then you have more towards the other end, which is Central Middle School. So, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. It's a very important department that we need since we've had some situations out across the city and weather as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your partnership.
And a motion to approve as well.
Motion approved by Counselor DeBana. On the motion, Counselor Harris, then Counselor Ash.
Do you know what? I'm going to yield to Counselor Ash.
You're good.
I'm good. Yep.
What a good term to use with Mr. Grenon in front of us. You're going to, we're going to yield. So, Director Grenon, thank you for your help. We have a standing meeting once a month. You get a lot of stuff done.
Do.
And I appreciate that. I know you don't work alone. Ally's amazing, Fred, Sarah, the whole team. Excited to see an addition. I think it's needed, not that you all don't handle it to the best of your abilities, but I'm sure it could be lighter on everybody else. I just looked at my phone. You sent me an email last night at 10:17.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
So, I appreciate, I mean, I'm not complaining whatsoever, but I just, I say that to highlight the constant communication. Obviously, I come in the first four months with some serious pedestrian issues on some of the major roads in the city. Mr. Scribby may have beat you to the punch, but I'd love to get an update while you're here on Quincy Ave and Southern Artery, that intersection, the repaving, if you don't mind.
Yes, sure. So, as you know, there's been some significant investment in that corridor. There's also been some significant loss with pedestrian, a fatality and injury. So, it is a corridor that we know, even though we have invested heavily, and it's one that we need to continue to invest in. Specifically on Southern Artery near 1,000 Southern Artery, you know, there's been $200,000 worth of grants already awarded that we've implemented. As Mr. Scribby pointed out earlier, we are chasing another, I believe it's $150,000, planning and demonstration grant through the Safe Streets For All program to further enhance and demonstrate safety improvements that can be made over there. The Quincy Avenue roadway project and working with Commissioner Al Graziosi, so we're able to make some improvements to the ADA situation along the corridor, which has been wonderful. It's always good to use the opportunity when we're investing in our roads to make sure that we're addressing our pedestrians. So, the road diet on Quincy Ave, while it was startling at first to everyone, has been hugely successful. We've had no, knock on wood, no serious injuries by pedestrians since that road was brought down from a four-wheeling road to a two-lane with a shared turn lane. So, you know, we're continuing to look for opportunities to make changes like that, to make investments in our public infrastructure that increase the walkability, the bikeability, and the safe drivability for all of our residents.
Thank you. And a question that maybe, I don't want to complicate things.
No.
With respect to the street lighting, there's a significant jump there.
Yep.
I'm sure it's warranted, but could you speak to that, and then maybe if that stands to see a decrease, given our new community electricity program?
It won't be included in the community electricity program. We use so much electricity for our street lighting, it's actually been bid out competitively separate.
Okay.
The rate is, it's, I believe it's eight cents per kilowatt hour compared to, I don't know if it's 12 or 13 or 14 cents with the Quincy Electric, so it's not included because it would be a worse deal for us. The rates for National Grid over the last three years have gone up 40% for the specific type of billing that the streetlights are in the, you know, the traffic signals are billed under. There's a, there's also been an increase in maintenance necessary on the lights, a lot of the lights, a lot of the underground fed lights are a little bit older, the city has owned them since before the streetlight retrofit project in 2017 and 18, so there's been a couple of lights that have had to be replaced, the tall, like 30-foot aluminum poles that have been leaning, so, there's been a little bit more capital level maintenance that we've handled, and then, you know, we will, it is looking like we're going to have to make a significant transfer from our current contractual line for this year to cover the electric bill for this current fiscal year, so, we're asking for an increase so that we don't have to deal with that issue next year, and we don't have to expend funds that we would usually expend on, you know, traffic improvements or buying stock on that sort of thing, so, trying to address it now, so it's an issue later.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counsel. Chair recognizes Counselor DeBona.
Thank you for coming in, Director Grenon. Pretty much going to reiterate exactly what the other councilors said, you know, you all do an excellent job, Ally, Fred, and the rest of them down there, and you were just talking about a 30-foot light pole and all these things, just to make people aware, what you guys really do is everything, even for our Christmas lighting, you got us power to Christmas tree lights and holiday lights, and thank you for always being there and guiding me through all these things, because my constituents are always asking to do one thing, first it's put the sign up, take the sign down, and you guys do it, you put it up, and then I call you two weeks later, because seven people said they don't want it anymore, so then you take it down, so, I appreciate all you guys do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Counsel. So we have a motion by Counselor DeBona, no more discussion on the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grenon. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Murphy, Natural Resources Department, made up Cemetery, Parks, and Forestry and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Before I get into my budget, I want to take the unusual step of thanking the council for their support of the new grants department, we're not at liberty to announce it as of yet, but we were very successful with their assistance in landing a seven-figure grant in the last month or so, because of the work of our department, Ms. List and Mr. Scribby, so, they're going to make our jobs much easier, and we're going to come to this body less frequently looking for large sums of money with a grant department like that, so thank you for your support of that department. Tonight, it's my honor to present the fiscal '25 proposed budget for the Department of Natural Resources, for those watching at home, we are Park, Forestry, Cemetery, Recreation, and Conservation. I am thrilled to be joined by my team here tonight, we've got Director of Recreation, Michelle Hanley, who you all know, we've got Heather List, our environmental scientist, Mike Castanelli, our project manager, Dan Cathcart, our tree warden, we've got Diane Bowman from the Furnace Brook Golf Course, we've got Paul Doherty, project manager, Eric DeBoer, program coordinator, and Tony Cabillion from the Recreation Department as well, too. Did I get everybody right? We oversee 54 parks, maintain 84 different locations, including islands, memorials, 11 municipal beaches and waterfront areas, two ponds, marshes, a dozen open space areas, and of course, a nine-hole golf course. We also oversee a number of events, including most recently Clean and Greener, one month from today, a shameless plug for the annual Flag Day Parade, and Senior Olympics, I know Michelle has been very involved over the last couple of weeks, running the Senior Olympics, the Christmas Festival Committee, and support for the concerts at both the Ruth Gordon Amphitheater and Out Frontier at the Hancock Adams Common. On the recreation side, we run programming year-round for residents of all ages from 3 to 100. This past year, Quincy Recreation provided more than 110,000 user experiences for our residents, and our new adult programming offerings are extremely popular, particularly the pickleball. With the continued support of Mayor Koch and the City Council, and the help of multiple grants, we've planted more than 770 trees this past year, primarily along our city's streets. I know the council is here quite a bit about trees when they get removed, so I think I'd like to give a plug for the amount of trees that we've been planting year after year. In fact, over the past five years, we've planted over 2,800 new trees throughout our city, primarily along our city's streets. Our tree warden, Dan Cathcart, has been working closely with the city's GIS team to enhance our street tree management program, and we plan to launch a new page in the coming months with the size, species, and condition of every street tree in Quincy, a number that is climbing close to 20,000. In our six municipal cemeteries, we have seen the two largest renovation projects in our city's history happen simultaneously over the past year. Mount Wallison has seen substantial improvements, particularly to the veterans section, and we are expanding Pine Hill Cemetery with the support of this body, to ensure Quincy residents have available burial space for the next two decades. Throughout these significant renovations, our cemetery staff continues to provide an appropriate and respectful environment for those who grieve. In our environmental division, we are moving closer to restoring Sailor's Pond, much like we did at Butler's Pond, a highly successful project we did in conjunction with the neighborhood. I anticipate work beginning there late fall of this year. We've also formed our invasive species management committee, in an effort to improve the health of our natural areas, our woods, marshes, and wetland areas. I want to thank the community volunteers for all their help, we had a very successful event last Saturday along Fennel Street, and it's great to see residents volunteer their time to help make the community better. At the Furnace Brook Golf Course, we're expecting another operational surplus for fiscal year '24, that will be two and a half years that we've been running the course, all at an operational surplus. We are progressing nicely with the clubhouse project, and expect to be open in early 2025. We anticipate the operational surplus to increase with the new building, as four new golf simulators and the attraction of a new building to draw an expected additional $300,000 per year in new revenue out of Furnace Brook. Our fiscal year '25 budget is rather straightforward, our cemetery budget is seeking one new position, a labor garden position, this will help us as we maintain the additional seven acres that we've created up at Pine Hill Cemetery. We've adjusted our summer help request upwards to account for actual spend, and we've adjusted our overtime downward. The council approved, you may remember, an increase in overtime a few years ago during COVID to account for substantial increases in Saturday burials, fortunately, that has leveled off since the pandemic has ended, and we can decrease that overtime line. In our parks budget, we are seeking two new labor garden positions to account for the capital investments that we have made in our park system over the past five years. Improvements at parks like Kincaid, Pageant, the Beach Comer, the Dog Park, La Breck, and many others require maintenance to keep these facilities at a high standard. You will find a $100,000 decrease, $100,000 decrease from $400,000 to $300,000 in our tree planting budget. That's not because we plan on planting fewer trees. We applied for and received a $750,000 five-year grant from the federal government for tree planting, and we plan on increasing our tree planting budget with funds outside the city budget. There is a position titled Cooperative Heritage that is migrating off federal funding and into the park budget. Melissa McGrew has been working for the past two-plus years as materials specialist, improving historic monuments throughout the city. She has completely refurbished the Miles Standish car on Squaw Rock, she has delicately removed damaging graffiti from more than 40 trees throughout Squaw Rock through her knowledge and expertise. She has helped clean and improve monuments at the Mount Wallison Cemetery and within Marymount Park. She has helped assemble the database of state and national register of historic places, and developed that into an inventory that was presented on the city's website this year. He's an extremely talented and capable scientist, and has become an important part of our team. For a city that values and celebrates our history, Melissa's role is critical in preserving our history for future generations. The recreation budget is also presented as level function, the council's support of a new position last year, and Michelle Hanley's leadership have allowed us to continue to provide award-winning programming. Our adult programming offerings have increased in both number and popularity. Those of you that haven't tried pickleball, I encourage you to sign up, and I promise you, you will enjoy it. The amount of programming we provide with your support through the Recreation Department is too long to mention, but it is the envy of recreation departments throughout the Commonwealth. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, that pretty much covers it all, huh? That was, that was very good. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Dave, outstanding work, you know, and it's great, the fact that you recognize the grants, the position we just, in committee, voted approval for. All I can, all I can say is, I'm going to write down the line, a motion to approve on the first.
This should be a motion to approve Cemetery.
Cemetery, yes, absolutely.
On the motion, Counselor Campbell.
I'll drop down.
Anyone on Cemetery? Counselor DeBona.
Just Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just Commissioner Murphy, the Pine Hill Cemetery expansion has been huge, just want to say personally, thank you, I know a lot of plots, a lot of the cemeteries got really packed up, and there was not much availability, and folks wanted to be buried in Quincy, so, kudos to that, I know it was up here for a vote a few years ago, and it was a very important matter that we actually moved forward on, so I'm actually happy that it's moved forward. How many, how many plots do we have over there, how many, in the expansion, and where are we at with having that finished?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, they're approximately 80% done, most of the interment spaces, the burial spaces are complete, you may recall from the presentation I made with the request for appropriation that they have pre-installed vaults, which will make the space much more efficient, and it'll make the job of digging the graves a lot easier for our staff. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize that that was a 20-plus-year endeavor that started with Mayor Koch when he was down in the Park and Cemetery Department back in the mid-'90s, so, it's wonderful to see it finally come to fruition, we're very fortunate, I do want to mention Michael Gibbons by name, he is the new general foreman of the Cemetery Department, replaced Mr. Logan, who did an excellent job for us as well, and C. Norton is the contractor on that job, and we couldn't be luckier to have partners working on that project that have made it so successful.
Just lastly, just thank you with all the cemetery work, the department's doing a fantastic job throughout all the cemeteries across the city, and especially for our veterans, Mount Wallison Cemetery, it just looks beautiful up there, the revitalization of that, when we're going by the police station every day of C Street has been, just been fantastic, and it'll complement when we finish the police station and across the street has that open space, it's just going to be great, so, thank you so much with that whole department, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. So we have a motion by Counselor Harris to approve Cemetery, on the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it. Next up, Parks and Forestry, Counselor Harris.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris, on the motion, Counselor DeBona, then Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just on this, the Parks and Forestry, you said we got a $750,000 grant for the trees, I know, over the years, trees has been an issue across the city, we came in, we subbed out some work, we finally got caught up, and then, I talked to you about all kinds of trees throughout the city, our new arborist, how's that doing, and how's he acclimating to, you know, Chris Hayward?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Counsel, I'm truly blessed, our team is full of professionals that make me look good, Dan has done an excellent job, he is as credentialed as anybody that I've worked with in my professional career, he is very responsive to the residents when they have a request, we also have, there are two elements to the trees.
Treewood, yeah.
And does most of the tree inspections and tree inventory, and Mike Castanelli does our planting, and we've adopted a right tree, right place, and Mike literally inspects every single location for the 770 trees and the 450 we plant next year, and so on and so on, so, we've built, the mayor has built an excellent team down there, and I'm very lucky to be part of it.
I know you were doing an inventory of the entire city for all the trees, where is that process, are you, and how's that going?
So the inventory itself is complete, we're now working with Steve Washburn and the GIS folks to launch that, you may have seen, we have a street tree management program out there identifying the spots, we did the flyover already, this would be adding the data levels for size, species, condition to each one of the street trees, and like I said, we're approaching almost 20,000 street trees, and that doesn't include parks, cemeteries, and wooded areas.
It's been great, because over the years, even folks that have had trees that are, you know, been taken down years and years ago, your department's been great with, hey, listen, we'll come out, we'll see if we can do a tree there, and then they can pick out the species and see if it works, so, thank you, it's been kudos, you, yourself, and your department's been doing a great job with that, and we've really come a long way with catching up, basically, throughout the city.
Thank you, Counsel, we're in a very unique position, through the support of the mayor, who is the ultimate tree guy, we're in a situation where we're looking for additional places to plant, some cities and towns are desperate to get inventory to plant so they can meet the demand for it, we're just the opposite, we're knocking down doors, sending out letters, looking for folks to take trees in front of their houses, so, we're going to keep on planting, you know, we're probably at eight and a half to one planted to removal now, which is a ratio I don't think the city's ever been at, and that's through support from the council and the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Campbell.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Chairman, Commissioner Murphy for coming in, I wanted to touch base on the golf course, and I think, first off, I wanted to recognize the patience and the professionalism you've had, and the, on both ends, it's a passionate group of neighborhood people who really are looking for the best out of that area, and I applaud them, I applaud you, I applaud the entire process, because I think that oftentimes what happens, sometimes you get the ball of steam growing, and it's done it over with, but, to your credit, you stopped it, and you took in all the input from the neighbors and that entire group, and I just wanted to applaud you on that, that was, that was not, no one can feel left out on the amount of work that you guys did to help with that, so, congratulations on that, that was very helpful. As far as the golf course itself, you know, you talk about having a surplus, running in the surplus, and I would imagine that the revenues are going to come from here, is that something you anticipate to kind of baseline, do you think there's going to be entertainment, or something to increase the revenues there, is that something you're anticipating?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the new building will have four new high-end golf simulators, which should generate approximately, based on our estimates, we're looking at what the hourly costs are, and a number of these other facilities, there's one at the Soul Show Plaza, the Municipal Course, at Brantry, the Municipal Course, in Hingham, they operate simulators, and about three or four years ago, when we started to research this, they didn't have a single hour available in their off-season, there's a huge demand for these types of facilities, so based on those estimates, we're predicting about $300,000 in new revenue just from the simulators.
Wow.
In addition to that, the new building is also going to be attractive, very attractive, and we're not going to turn it into a function facility, it's a golf clubhouse, so during the golf season, I don't anticipate having events up there, in fairness to the neighbors, we don't want to have golf and events going on at the same time, in the off-season, November, December, if people want to have a holiday party, a shower of some type, my guess is the building rental revenue is going to increase dramatically as well, when I say dramatically, it's close to zero, we're operating out of trailers right now, I don't want people to think that we're turning this into granite links, we're going to be the best Furnace Brook that we can possibly be, and I think it's going to be something that we're all going to be proud of.
That's great, and the, and the winter, the other uses of it, and there's a lot of sledding that goes on up there, and during snow days, and I'm sure the families might go up there and have a bite to eat, is that something that, that's possible?
That would be great, we had a demand for that a few winters ago, when we actually had snow, but last year, there was almost none, but certainly, I think it would be very attractive to parents to drop the kids off on the slope, and let them go sledding, and come in and have a bite, and, you know, not sit outside freezing cold in the burners on the parking lot, like they would do in the past.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All set. So I have, oh, Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Murphy, thank you for the presentation and the budget, you have a, you're a consummate professional, but you also have a great team, so, a lot to be proud of, Michelle's been great to me, Mr. Castanelli and I worked together on the Quincy Point Beach project last year, that was great, Counselor DeBona just asked about Mr. Cathcart, and that's because the ward councilors are taking up all of Mr. Cathcart's time, so the at-larges don't have to, and he's extremely responsive, very professional, I won't ask for updates on, for an update on Faxon Park, because we just went over one for my newsletter, but I look forward to working with you on that, as well as potentially the new Cleverly Court project coming down the pike, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I get a motion by Counselor Harris, any more comments on the motion? If not... If not, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. On Parks and Forestry, recreation's up next. Motion approved by Counselor Harris. On the motion, Counselor DeBarna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just the team of the recreation department is very important for the, for also the youth in the city. Just a little chime in on the, the ice grate in Rink was, was a home run. We frequented quite a bit. It was, it was beautiful, and hopefully we can find another spot for it next year, and I've talked to both of you about it offline, and just thank you. The last thing is really the recreation. I know during the summer, the kids are going to be at the parks, and I've always asked about this, Michelle, is, is we, do we have any shade, like the shade umbrellas? Do we have any? Maybe we can get that in the grant funding department. We'll put that on there. Do you think we, we can maybe, because I know the new school, the new Richard de Cristofaro School's going to have that on the outside area. They're going to have two nice ones, and we're looking to see if we can make some additions in some of the, some of the parks across the city. Is that possible, or is it something we can look at?
I've got a proposal right here by hand.
Awesome. That's beautiful. So I thank you. It's been, throughout the city, the constituents have asked about it a few times, just because there's been some blistering hot days, and just to have a little bit of shade will be great. So thank you for everything you guys do. We're just looking forward to having another recreation over the summer, the summer classes, summer, summer camps that you guys have and do a great job with. So thank you.
Chair recognizes Counselor Minton.
Just want to comment on your efforts to create programs for the 18-plus residents of Quincy. That's something that I always thought was amiss, and I think it would draw people to the city, and it's just a win-win. And secondly, about how many jobs you've created through the years for Quincy's youth and the hiring prospects down the road, so how many of them end up in public service? It's pretty amazing. Barry Welch used to boast about how I was a rec leader, and I became a public servant. And it just, it's, it's a contagious thing. It's, it's a credit to how you train these people, how you get them to want to be in public service. Thank you.
Thank you. They are great. We have 273 hourly staff currently in the recreation division, and they're wonderful. The senior Olympians these past two weeks can't say enough. The folks at pickleball in the evening can't say enough about how wonderful the rec staff is. So you're right, Counselor. Thank you.
Counselor?
All set, thank you.
Chair recognizes Counselor Devine.
Thank you very much for coming in. Kincaid Park is probably, I think, the nicest park in all of Quincy right now, and you're always having something going on there, so I really appreciate that. Keeps a nice buzz there. We have a lot of, you know, the Southwest and Lincoln Hancock, so all the recreation stuff that's going on, I really appreciate it. And while we have the commissioner there, I'd like to reiterate that as you mentioned all your employees before, behind you, you're 100% right. They're unbelievable. As much as I like to knock on your door and talk to you, and you've always been open and, and answered everything I've had to do, I find myself less knocking on your door because of how competent all your people under you are. So it's very easy just to go to whichever one I need to, and they're able to take care of it instantly. So it's a credit to you and to them. Thank you very much. And as far as the tree warden, I don't know how Richard Ash got any time with them because I'm always over there myself. So thank you.
Motion approved. Motion approved from Counselor Devine. On the motion, any other comments? With that, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Heinz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Paul Heinz, Department of Public Buildings. Thank you for having us again. We're before you a couple of weeks ago with the CIP request, so we got, I held it a lot of our highlights in the things that we do at that time, so I won't reiterate them now. I will just repeat the statement that our department provides a stage that everybody else operates on. So whether it's code compliance issues, accessibility issues and all that, we address them in the health and safety issues. I too want to applaud your support for the grant department. We've brought in significant funds to, to our department through grants. They become more and more complicated and more and more in number. So if you're not on top of it, you miss out on them. And one of the worst things is you receive a grant, you spend the money, and nobody follows up with the paperwork, you're now going to do a scramble. So now there's dedicated staff with that that will see them through to the end, and that's, that's significant. I would like to thank the team that works in the Department of Public Buildings, from the, the project managers and everybody, the admins, the custodians, keep the buildings clean, the maintenance crews that keep them together and improved and renovated. They're really an amazing team of people, great craftsmen, and they do great work. Currently, we have a number of new construction buildings going on. If you know, the public safety, the Furnace Brook Golf Club in conjunction with the Department of Natural Resources, the animal shelter. We're starting, believe it or not, the early construction efforts for the Squawam School in tandem with the design of what's going on. We're doing that in coordination with the Department of Public Works, installing drainage in summer '24 and some other elements. Just to get it going. So our goal is to start in September '25 for the actual constructions of Squawam School. The design, the exterior design, the interior design is absolutely stunning. We'll be soon having a community rollout, and I think you'll really be impressed with the work of the architect, Arrow Street. The major structural repairs of the Kennedy Center are now complete, we're just doing punchwork on that, and very thankful we did that. It was a whole lot worse than anyone ever thought. There were times when the crew underneath actually punctured the floor up into the living space. The concrete was that thin in locations. So that is behind us. The building is now sound, and will serve the city for many, many more years and the programming that occurs there. So with regard to my budget, by and large, it is a level-funded budget, with the exception of the salary lines that were the topic of last year's vote and adoption of the, of the increases that the council felt were deserving to the employees. Ed Grenon mentioned earlier about the electric bidding out. So the Department of Public Buildings puts out the energy contract bids, and we did just lock in five years of electric at about four cents a kilowatt hour, less than the community aggregation, which all by and large is about nine or 10 cents a kilowatt hour cheaper than national grid. And we've locked that in for five years. So national grid, we know, is going to escalate, and we have a flat line going forward. Notwithstanding that, I think the one requested increase outside of personal services is for our energy. There is a big cost of this coming up fiscal year with the new contract. It is higher than the old one. We do have more buildings than we have had before, and we have a couple of all-electric buildings coming online. So although they're great overall for sustainability purposes, they are expensive to run. So there is the $50,000 increase in the energy procurement line. By and large, everything else is, is spot on with last year.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Paul, you had me, you had me at Kennedy Center, Squawam School, and you didn't mention the work that you did with what is fantastic, is the North Quincy Library. I mean, we went through multiple folks, you know, coming at us about North Quincy and we, library. We didn't rush through it. We were dealing with COVID, we were dealing with supply issues, we were dealing, and now the wait was worth it with, as far as the North Quincy Library is concerned. I, I couldn't write out a prescription to get it fixed, to be honest with you, if you catch my drift. So I just want to say thank you. You, I think, I think your department is doing a fantastic job. At least those three items, the Kennedy, Kennedy Center is, is instrumental for the whole city when it comes to seniors, but, and North Quincy Library was very much missed when it was closed.
It sure was.
So, and the Squawam School, it's a great thing. So I can't thank you enough, you, the administration, as far as those three items that have taken place, and I'm very proud to say that I motion to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Harris. On the motion, Counselor DeBarna and Counselor Ash.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just Commissioner Heinz, you're doing a great job out there in the city, public buildings. We have a lot throughout the city, and just saying thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Heinz? Thank you. Commissioner Heinz, thank you. I think people at home, I know I certainly forget sometimes how many public buildings we have and how much you have under your, your purview. So while I have you here, I would love to see if we can get maybe another update on the clubhouse, maybe one that doesn't include you and I with umbrellas walking around inside. I figured this is, might be a little more kosher, so if, if you could, please.
So to answer the first part of it, it's how you define buildings, how many we have. More traditional definitions, about 73. A little broader one pushes 90, and it's pretty diverse. So there's always problems everywhere. The Four River Clubhouse, it's one of those things that we had the limited scope of what we intended to do until we went in and started taking things apart, and it almost collapsed on us. So the building is currently usable, as you know, for the community events that, that are, that are ongoing and those that want to use it. The architect has now been re-engaged to finalize the roof specifications through the request of the mayor and the support of the, the plating department. We did get another $500,000. So that'll be the second $500,000 grant from the Community Development Block Program towards the Four River Clubhouse. So that will, that'll get us over the, the finish line on the, the building structurally and the, the roof, the kitchen, the coat upgrades with the electric and, and those things. There will still be further work down the road to replace the HVAC system, and because it was old and wood and the number of people that can occupy the building, we do need to put a fire suppression sprinkler system in. So we've made the preliminary steps needed for that. When we brought in new water service, we brought in the fire surface line. We put the electric underground, all that. When we dug the street once, we put them all in. But it, you know, we're moving forward. We're about to be a little more aggressive than we have been, quite honestly, over the last few years. But it is, it is still going to be another couple of years before we can say it's 100%. But it'll be coming back online for use much sooner than that.
Okay. And is the roof, with respect to the roof, is that still on track for the spring and, spring and summer?
Yes. Michael's summer, summer '24, to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion made by Counselor Harris. Any other comments from counselors? Just one comment from myself, Paul. Been a great, done a great job. When I first came on the school committee 20 years ago, public buildings was a few guys in the school department. When the mayor came in, 2006 or so, 2007 there, you know, we made the move of transferring it over to the city side, and it's been nothing but a success, both in new construction and renovation and restoration with the buildings. We would be, and we always were, trying to catch up with things i- in a bad way when we, we didn't have a public buildings department. So kudos to your gang and the administration for getting this done. So with that, motion by Counselor Harris. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Just a reminder, June 3rd, couple of weeks, Monday night, 7 o'clock, and we'll finish up. Thank you.[1751.51][1751.51]